If you're ready to buy or sell your home, then stop in at 4234 Market Street to let one of the agents at Howard Hanna Professionals help. Our friendly and knowledgeable agents can help you find the key to your dream home. Looking for a new career? Howard Hanna Professionals can help there too. Howard Hanna Professionals will assist new and experienced agents with the startup fees for an exciting career in real estate. Call Katrina Lory at 814-726-2000 for more information.
Here at Casella, we make temporary dumpster rental easy. Offering services that are perfect for construction, remodeling, special events, or other short-term projects. Casella dumpsters are available in a wide range of sizes to fit any job. Our dedicated customer service team will help you choose the right-sized container and service level for your project, and schedule hassle-free removal based on your specific needs. The right-sized dumpster, when you want it, where you want it, removed when you say so.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Coffee and Conversation. Brian Hager with you on your daily local. Our special guest this week, Warren County Commissioners Dan Gloss, Ken Claycamp. Gentlemen, thanks so much for joining us. And it just occurred to me, I failed. It's Coffee and Conversation, and I am sans coffee this morning. So my mistake, we'll make it up to you at some point. But yeah, first of all, again, thanks so much for joining us. And you guys are about over six months into your term here as Warren County Commissioners. But both of you spent significant time in this building prior to being Commissioners. So what's it like now kind of being on the other side of the chair at home in the big office?
Well, for me, it's been 33 years that I've worked for the county. I was Director of Warren County Planning and Zoning Commission for 26 of those years. I did a lot of interaction with the county commissioners, so I was aware of a lot of the role that they played. However, I wasn't exposed to the degree of budgeting that had to happen. You know, I was responsible for the budget for my department, of course, but budgeting for all of the departments in the county for some past. And I didn't have a lot of experience with some of the agencies the Commissioners are responsible for, such as Human Services, the Rouse Estate, and the rest of that stuff. So a few challenges, but I felt pretty comfortable moving into the role.
Yeah, I don't think anybody realizes everything that the county Commissioners are responsible for. They're aware of the contracts, the budgeting, and budgeting is a challenge. As everybody knows, we've lost population since late 1970s, early 80s. We went from 47,000 in population down to 38,000 now. And it's a challenge. And you try to do what's right and provide the services. So you've got to be on your game.
So what would be the one thing that maybe was different or unexpected, or that you thought happened as a Commissioner that is not at all what you expected it to be?
Probably overseeing the budget. I mean, we all knew, all the department heads and the row officers knew that there was a budget. But to stay on task and track the income at times is very challenging. We have a new fiscal director who, she's been there two weeks.
Yes.
And she's getting a handle on things. She's very sure and keeps us in line.
Yeah, I have to agree with Commissioner Claycamp. The budgeting thing is difficult. You know, I would keep track of the budget for my department, but when you're looking at the overall expenses for the county, you tend to keep a closer eye on things and look for any place you can to save. And that's not the easiest task.
Well, I mean, and you would budget as Chair for that. And I'm sure when you're heading a department and you're going over your budget, I need this, I need this. And then, you know, the Commissioners come in and kind of be like, oh, we've got to cut here and cut here. Is there now a better understanding of that process as far as why you look at a department's budget and say, boy, we just can't?
Yes. Before you were, or I was, I mean, I was the sheriff and I prepared the budget for the sheriff. And parts of that, when the sheriff had the jail, I mean, it was a large task. But now seeing and understanding things that have happened and where we would like to go, but can we?
Yeah.
And one of the things for me is 25% of our population at Warren County, the senior citizens, they're on fixed income. And how do you strike that balance? And sometimes it's difficult. And we've had to say no for more than we would like, but it is a challenge.
Well, and you mentioned, you know, with population decline and, you know, with, I know, we recently just made the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan trying to, you know, dissuade any more loss of private lands to becoming public and non-taxable. How frequently, when you're going over the budget, I mean, are those revenue numbers from tax income, are they kind of changing? Or do you know, okay, this is what we've got for sure, this is what we have to work with?
Yeah, that's difficult to answer. You know, you always have that percentage of non-collectibles. And when you build a budget, you build it on the assumption that you're going to recover a certain percentage of revenue through the taxes. But that doesn't always hold true. And then another thing that you have to figure into the equation are the appeals that we have. And we've had some sizable ones over the years, primarily on the commercial side of things. But there are residential appeals as well, and all of that impacts the budget after it's been adopted.
Right, right, yeah.
It makes it really difficult to try to make the numbers match the expenses.
And if you look, which we did, and that was one of the things that we made sure so we could understand was, to number one, look at the population decline. Number two, the appeals. I think there were, if I'm not mistaken, from 2017 to 2021, there were 17 appeals. And the county had no defense to it because there had not been a reassessment. And I think everybody knew that the county needed to be reassessed. But again, money.
Yeah.
And from 2017 through 2021, we, the county has lost just under $8 million in taxable property based on the appeals.
Yeah, and so that's just, that's not, we've lost land or we've lost people. That's just businesses or residents or whoever appealing their tax liability.
This is why it's so important to do the reassessment, to level the planning field. It's not a favorite topic, I'm telling you, but it's something that really is necessary.
It was kind of, if you look at the history, it was kind of a perfect storm. Population, appeals, changing private lands to public lands. Warren County, there's 32% of Warren County that is either owned by the federal government or state. And what happens is it comes from, it takes, the burden goes to the taxpayer. They're the ones that pay the price per se. So we did the Comprehensive Plan and made some changes. And hopefully some state entities will look at our position. And it's basically the same position the Forest Service is there. So.
Well, and like you said, as Mr. Lyon had said at the meeting, it's not like you can just say, no, we're not going to sell this to you.
Right, you don't have the authority to.
Right, but it may make them stop and say, okay, hey, this is a place where maybe we need to go look somewhere else for it.
It's actually raised a concern to folks out there that are considering these purchases. We have a great concern over the amount of public land that we have.
There's, I think there's around 41,000 acres, just a stick game.
Yeah.
I've never heard, I'm a hunter. I've never heard anybody complain that he couldn't find a place to hide. So.
Yeah.
And I guess what bothered me was there was an interview that was done by the prior Commissioner of the Game Commission, who made the statement that we're going to buy up as much land as we can. Well, they have a war chest. The county gets nothing from timber sales or the municipalities or school district. They get nothing more from the OGM leasing. And that goes into their war chest. And.
Which makes it a lot easier for them to go buy more properties.
Absolutely. At least with the Forest Service, you get timber sales. You get a percentage of the timber sales. With the state, you get absolutely nothing. And I don't know if there's a way that that can be changed. I'm sure the Game Commission's not going to be all for it. But there needs to be some relief to the taxpayers.
Well, and you know, you mentioned the Game Commission, and I'm sure they would approach that much as, you know, you guys did as department heads with budgets, say, hey, we need this and have those kinds of things. But it's, you've got to have somebody looking at the overall and going, okay, yes, we need state game lands. Those are a necessity, but is there a point where you have too much? And it becomes a hindrance more than a boost.
And it was eye-opening when we were working with Assessment Office to look at the value of those properties prior to them being made public lands. They were, I think, one was $3 million, if not more. And they can never be developed.
Right. When you look at the lands that are off limits for development, of course, we've got the Allegheny National Forest. That's a sizable footprint in not only Warren County, but the other three counties, Kane Elk and Forest County. You've got the game lands. And then when you factor in terrain like steep slope and so forth, that cuts down even more on the development land. So it's a challenge for us.
So, and I know one of the residents who was at the meeting had commented about, you know, maybe there's other ways those lands can be used economically as far as, you know, bringing people in or having special events or what. But how closely are you able to work with the Forest Service or the Game Commission and say, hey, is there a way that we can take, you know, this tract and turn it into, you know, a trail system or something that will be an economic boon to the county?
Well, we saw that happen with the Trails of Chakes Rocks. Forest Service was very on board with that type of a project. And it's grown about 40,000 miles, I believe, in different challenges and so forth. But the spin-off from that is the economic boost that it brings to that region. We've got folks coming into the area that are staying overnight, living in our restaurants, organizing shops and so forth. So it does help economically. When you've got hunters coming in and hunting on the game lands, they spend money too on not only their equipment and so forth, but food. They're probably multiple states. Maybe they have a camp, most of them probably do.
Yeah.
But they're still buying food and other supplies and so forth. So it does help.
And so what are some other ways that maybe the county could, on the periphery, you know, it's kind of like, oh, we know people are going to this place because they want to be on these game lands. Or we know that they're going to the Trails of Chakes Rocks. You know, are there places along those routes that we could develop or encourage? You know, hey, if you're thinking about a business, this would be a good place for that.
I think that's very important. We have to sell ourselves. That is a given. I think that the Visitors Bureau, I think they're doing a fantastic job. I was in Florida, I think it was in March, and we were coming north and stopped at a rust area down around Washington, PA. And there was the Warren County, and I was pleased.
Yeah.
And to look at their statistics, mostly the contacts that they're making.
Yeah, I know Casey and Lisa have been just going anywhere and everywhere and trying to spread the word. And it certainly seems like they're, when things are going on here, they're out and about and, you know, trying to make sure that everybody knows that it's going on here too. And how do those kinds of partnerships, you know, with the Commissioners in places like the Visitors Bureau or, you know, the Forest Service or just even some of the local municipalities, you know, like the City Council or Township Supervisors? How do those relationships work in so much as, you know, Commissioners kind of going, hey, what can we do that's going to help you guys bring in businesses or people or things of that nature?
We have seats on a variety of boards, so we do have input. When it comes to decision-making, obviously we're just one voice on each of those boards. But, you know, we, I would have to say that there is no communication barrier, in my opinion. I think that the outside entities do work well with us and listen to us. We may not always be on the same page as far as what we think should happen or could happen, but it's give and take on the part of all parties involved.
And we have been very open and we have an open-door policy. If someone has an issue, to come and see us.
Yeah, hold on. I think they did the power search. Okay, so there may have been a blip there. So we're recording this on Monday, and they're doing some work on the generator outside. And we were told that there was going to be a quick switch over from generator to main, and we think that's what happened there. So apologize for that. And Ken, you were talking about some of the communication and things with some of the other municipalities and how these agencies work together.
Yes, we have an open-door policy. We've had citizens that have stopped and voiced concerns. And our main goal is to be open and upfront and listen. There are no bad ideas. I think that's important. We work, as everyone knows, we work with WCCBI, the Visitors Bureau, and.
I think we have 18 boards that we have.
Oh, yeah. Some days we run from three and it was a six or seven meetings.
Yeah.
Night meetings, day meetings. So, but we want to be out there. We want to be seen. We want to talk to the public at some point.
And so one of those boards or committees is, you know, the new one, Warren Works, which has kind of been a lot of talk going on and just had their first public meeting last week. State stakeholders, public stakeholders meeting, yes. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure I saw you sitting in the back row there in one of the pictures, Dan. But so what was your takeaway from that initial meeting as far as the way the public is responding to this new organization?
Well, first of all, we know we're experiencing some problems. And we can do one of two things. We can sit and watch things happen on their own and not control them, or get involved and hope we make the right decisions moving forward. Warren Works is not set up at all to replace the Tours and Bureau.
Right.
There are two different missions, Tourism Folks and Warren Works. Warren Works is focused primarily on attracting businesses to the entrepreneurs to the area by marketing us in a certain manner, and promoting homeownership to folks that don't live in the region. So, you know, I'm hopeful that it's going to work. We need to give it a chance. And it's so important for everyone to think positively about it rather than the negativity. Negativism just doesn't do anybody any good.
Well, I thought it was interesting. I had, we had a correspondent, for lack of a better word, my mom, went to the meeting. I couldn't go, yes, but she, you know, she was kind enough to record some of it, you know, most of it. And but it was interesting to me that this became more of that positive, hopeful interaction as opposed to, you know, people coming and complaining about what they think is wrong with things or how something should change. And I think, you know, if that can continue throughout, then the organization itself has a much better chance of success.
The projects that were kind of by at that first stakeholder meeting are projects that came out of both the county's Comprehensive Plan and the city's Comprehensive.
Yeah.
And so the group was challenged with, well, what do we start with first after we get the marketing person in place? What are some of the projects that we want to tackle? And so the folks there were given three dots and take your dots and put them where you think are the most important pieces of this. And in the end, there were maybe five different projects that just jumped out that had the most dots and others had maybe one or two dots. So you can see where folks were envisioning the order of importance.
Well, and I mean, just having that information in and of itself, I would think, you know, not just for Warren Works, but for the Commissioners, for the other municipalities, planning bodies going, okay, you know, we might have an idea of what we think it should be, but this is what, you know, our citizens, our residents want to see prioritized. I mean, does that, that's got to aid you in how you plan for things.
Absolutely. And another thing too is there are certain projects that were identified that are best suited for the county.
Right.
Other projects, other entities, the Analytic Warren Works Group, or some other agency that.
Well, it could be, you know, the Planning Department or, you know, RDA or something. Just, I think that was one of the things Jim Decker had said, I believe it was at the City Council meeting, was, you know, we can do all these comprehensive plans. We've done them in the past. But then they sit on the shelf somewhere and collect dust. And it seems like this is at least, the idea is that this will kind of assign those projects and provide some accountability of, hey, this is on you now. What do you need to get it done?
That was important going into when we were discussing Warren Works. Is there has to be progress. If the county and the city are going to commit these dollars, there has to be goals and objectives, and they have to be met. We had a joint meeting with City Council members, City Council, Commissioner Gloss and I were here, and folks from WCCBI. And we told Emory upfront, this is what we have to have, and it has to be reviewed. And if it's not working, then we need to make some changes. And I think that was important because the people need to know where the money is going, what progress is being made. And it's an obligation. And we told them that day that we're responsible to the taxpayers, as are the City Council.
Right.
And that was important to us.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, when you're, as a body, going to commit six figures to a project, it's not like you just, ah, you can take this hundred grand and do whatever and, yeah, just get back to us at some point, right?
It's all about accountability.
Yeah, and that was a question that was asked of all of us at different times. Are you just going to give them the money and let them do? And we're like, no, there has to be goals and objectives.
Well, and I would think, you know, the Commissioners have a couple of seats, Council has a couple of seats, the Chamber, the Visitors Bureau, COG. You know, having all of those entities comprising the Executive Committee really lends itself to, like you were saying, that accountability of, you know, you guys are going to be there in that room. Hey, what are you spending this money on? Where is this going and why? And one of the other things I thought was very interesting that came out from Mr. Koppco, Akaw Koppco, the Executive Director of the Center for Rural Pennsylvania, talked about if we could bring in 100 two-child families, it equates to just under $11 million a year in spending. And when you say it like that, you know, all those numbers kind of sound big, but, I mean, 100 families, it feels less daunting than when you look at it and say, well, we've lost, you know, X amount of people from the county. But if we can get just 100.
We've seen and heard of, it, I mean, it's not overwhelming, but we have heard about families and people moving back to Warren. That maybe they were from here originally that had left. Last year at the fair, we were talking to some individuals. There was one from California, one from North Carolina, and one from Pittsburgh that have moved back to Warren County. And since then, we've heard of even more coming. So maybe, hopefully, the trend is starting to shift a little bit.
And broadband's key for this too. You know, we are working diligently on getting coverage for the whole county.
Right.
If you like the outdoors, if you like the change of seasons, this is the place to be.
Yeah.
And we've got plenty of good, clean water. And that definitely helps, especially when you look at what's going on up west with the shorter seasons and so forth.
Well, and, you know, I'd like to say to people frequently over the last couple of years that Warren County seems like a place that would just be ripe to attract a lot of the remote workers and people who want to, you know, work for some of these bigger firms. And they're allowing them to work remotely, but they want to have access to outdoor recreation and, you know, maybe not necessarily be in a major urban center. You know, so it seems like that would be one of the great ways to kind of market. We've got to market the county, you know, for people. You know, obviously businesses, I think we'd have a different job, but for people, it's, hey.
But the dance point about broadly, we need that. I mean, it benefits farmers, industry, individuals, and the list goes on. So it is a part of the puzzle.
And affordability too.
Yeah.
Housing here is very reasonable, especially when you look at some of the metropolitan areas. Yeah, some of the homes that we have here that are selling for around $100,000. Somewhere else, maybe half a million.
Right.
My son lives in Washington County, and he was looking to buy. And everything that he looked at was $150,000 or more.
Yep.
And they were, they were bad.
Yeah.
They were terrible. They needed so much work. And of course, him being from Warren County and now living in Washington County, he could see that.
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, we saw that when we were in Colorado Springs. You know, and a lot of that was, that's a major military town. I mean, there's five different bases, I think, around there. But, you know, just to even try to find an apartment there is. But, you know, just even try to find an apartment there is just incredibly expensive because all the landlords know, you know, what the basic housing allowance is to go, all right, well, that's, you know, that's where we're starting, that's the lowest you're going to get. You know, and then, and then we moved back here and we bought a home and we're, you know, paying less for our mortgage than, you know, a lot of people are paying for rent and stuff like that. And so it's definitely, like you said, cost of living seems to be one of those things that, again, we need to, we need to do maybe a better job of, of kind of selling to people like, hey, this is a good place to live for all these reasons, you know, small town, rural areas, et cetera, but it's affordable too.
And that's a challenge for Warren Works on the marketing side of things.
Yeah.
Sell that concept or that way of life to rest of the folks out there.
Well, you know, and the, the thing, when, when he talked about the hundred families, and this is where I, I wish I could have been there that night to, to kind of ask this question, but, you know, does that, does that count retention too? You know, we just, just celebrated commencement a couple of weeks ago and so, you know, a couple hundred students are graduating and going to go off into the world, but, you know, it, it would be interesting to see the data on how many of them once they leave for what, you know, military or college or trade school or whatever, how many of them are coming back to start their career? And would that count as part of the, you know, the hundred people that we're trying to bring in is, is just retaining some of those students that will just graduate?
Retention is key, but, you know, you, you, you bring up a good point about high school students graduating and, and going off to wherever.
Right.
And I think there's this sense of adventure in the minds of a lot of those young people. Wow, this is out there. I want to see the, the rest of the country experience big city life or, or whatever the
Right.
opportunities might be. But to bring them back again, yes, we would like to do that, but if you have a degree in oceanography, you're probably going to. Work in the alligator.
Right. Well, and that's, I mean, my, my sister's a prime example. She, you know, she went to the Fashion Institute in Manhattan. You know, she's now well traveled, but, you know, it's like, her career is just one of those ones that doesn't lend itself to.
To live here.
And that's okay. And there's nothing wrong with that. And, but, you know, for, for a lot of those, those kids that are going to go on to, you know, business administrators or want to be entrepreneurs you know, or want to work in a, in a bank or manufacturing or whatever, you know, it's it seems like we need to maybe do a better job of saying, hey, you, you don't have to go to find that fulfilling, rewarding career. You can, you can stay and maybe even get yourself ahead because you're not having to pay those.
You don't have overheads. One of the things I think we have around here education wise, it's real geometry, it's the Career Center.
Absolutely.
You know, I've had an opportunity to tour that and it's just so impressive.
Yeah.
College isn't for everyone.
Right.
But trade schools are, they, they seem to be the, in thing now. Whether it's locally here at the Career Center and moving right into the workforce, which is the intent for a lot of the program up there, or off to a system like Penn College and where you learn any craft or trade as opposed to, you know, if you bring in business or athletic.
Well, and I thought it was interesting that they started, for the Career Center, they, they had a, a signing day for all those students that are going to be going right from school into the workforce locally. And I thought that was just a fantastic idea. And I know, I know Lori Hahn up at, at Warren also had one for the military kids that are going, you know, to, to celebrate. I mean, when you say signing day for most people, that's, you know, somebody signing an athletic scholarship or whatever, but, you know, there's no reason we can't celebrate whatever career path or what have you that, that a lot of these other kids are going into as well. And, and making sure that they understand that we recognize the value of, of what they're doing and that they're quite a part of the community.
Well, that, yes, and I was out of high school about two weeks and I left and went to military, which was probably the wisest decision I ever made. It made me grow up and made me mature. And I remember my second day. The day before, we, everybody went to Buffalo to, to Armed Forces Station and left Garland, wound up in Buffalo. And the next day, at, at, at the Hotel Lafayette, I don't know if it's even existed. It was pretty rough shape then.
Yeah.
But did the physical the next day and they said, you know, you can come back or you can go. And I thought, I'm here.
Yeah.
First time I ever flew.
Yeah.
And that was an adventure.
Yeah.
But the next morning, we had gotten, it was like five thirty in the morning, there's the trash cans, you know, and the first thing I said to myself is, what did you get yourself? But it was, it was a very wise, and I'm, I'm very happy to see
Yeah.
the kids that are going into the military or going to trade school being acknowledged. I think that's important.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's what I said, I thought, both of those, I thought, were just fantastic ideas. And, you know, again, just, just recognizing, those are lofty goals for a lot of, for a lot of kids and, and major achievements, you know, and again, taking time to recognize that, hey, there, there is value in that. And, and we understand that there's value in that and we appreciate it. I thought it was just, just phenomenal ideas. So, gentlemen, I know you are busy. It's, probably want to get a lot of your work done as we're about to hit the heat wave this week. Get it done while you can. Yes. So hopefully we don't have any issues from that, but I want to thank you both for, for taking some time with us and sitting down. And I'm sure we'll be back at it again at some point with you here. Just check in and see how things are going. But what is, now that you're about six months in, we think the one thing that was, think, think how I want to say this, when you were, when you were campaigning, what's the one thing that was drastically different that, or goal that you thought you had coming in that maybe you, you've modified and want to revisit?
For me, I think it was, I wanted to continue public, public service and improve the message. As I said, we have an open door policy. We, we want to hear from the public. And, but it was different, going from something that I had done for forty plus years to now being a commissioner. So I, especially when you've, when you find out everything that you, that the commissioners are responsible for.
Yeah.
I think for me, it's an idea that Commissioner Clay Camp came up with, with getting out into the rural areas with the, the different agencies and the services that are provided by them. There are so many folks out there that don't know where to turn or who to turn to for certain needs and so forth. And I hadn't thought about that when I was campaigning, but as we talked here in the office and Ken came up with that concept, this is a great idea. We need to do all we can to let the folks out there know that they're not out there alone. There is help out there and we need to assist in, in helping find that.
What we envision is, hopefully in October before snow and a bad weather sets in, is having four locations. As an example, Columbus, Grand Valley, Tidew and Sheffield. And doing like an alacart where if you, your family's having issues with something or you're having issues, there will be representatives from these different agencies, EOC, the Senior Center and on and on where we're not going to do a big, we're not going to do speeches.
Right.
Because that's not what we're there for.
Yeah.
But set up alacarts. So whatever area that you may need help, you can go directly to them.
So, so almost like satellite locations for the different agencies?
Well, it's more like a, a, a one day or a one night.
Yeah.
Event to each of those locations where, depending on what your needs are, we'll have representatives from a variety of agencies and entities that are there to answer questions or to help you through an application process or let you know what's out there.
But EOC, EOC is important. Number one, they have the weatherization
Yeah.
program. They have the rent assistance program and we all fall on hard times at one time right now. So let's get out there and help them. That's what we're here for. And one of the things that we, that we've noticed is that the outlined areas, Columbus, Springfield, Albert, Southwest and other areas of the county, of primarily those, their kids go to different, they don't go to the Warren County school.
Right, yeah.
Erie, Corey or Titusville.
Yeah.
And they may not know what services are available. So we want to get the word out and give them an opportunity.
Cause, well, yeah, cause in their, in their school district, they'd be hearing about Erie County or Vanango County.
But if you live around Warren County, you can't take advantage of Erie County.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So if your family, I mean, food.
Yeah.
Where are the food companies? Where can I go to get assistance? And that's what we want to accomplish.
We're compiling the list now of the different agencies that we want to invite. We're asking that they commit to the four sections that we're planning. So that we're having a consistent message at all four locations.
And so that's a, again, just a phenomenal idea and going, going to where the people are as opposed to, you know, just. And, and I think that's a recognition of, hey, not everybody knows what all is available.
That's right.
You know, it's, I, I think sometimes we get into the, you know, our own little bubbles of, oh, well, I know about this. Why doesn't everybody know something about this?
And I don't know how many times that when I was a sheriff's deputy and out in Columbus or Springfield, they did not associate with Warren County.
Yeah.
They associated with Corey or Titusville.
Yeah.
And we just, we want to get the word out. That's what we're here for. That's, that's what we need to do.
Well, and as Commissioner Clay Camp mentioned several times, they have an open door policy. So if you have questions, feel free to reach out to them, also to Commissioner Urban as well, who can be with us today. But again, gentlemen, thank you so much for taking some time with us, explaining some things, letting some people know about some things that may be upcoming that they can take advantage of. And again, we look forward to having you back on sometime in the near future, checking in, see how things are going.
Yes.
All right, that'll do it for this episode of Coffee and Conversation for Commissioners Glocks and Clay Camp. This is Brian Hager. I'm your daily local saint. Thank you so much for watching. Enjoy.